High School Advisors, Honor and Olivia. Well, thank you for coming.
All right, so we only have, we're warning you, we only have a few today. There hasn't been too much going on, but we'll still try to give as much information as we can.
So, last week, we had midterms, and they went well, and many students were pleased with how they did, but also were happy to get them over with and be moving into the second semester.
We wanted to talk about the Martin Luther King Day Assembly. We thought that it was really interesting. A woman spoke, and it was really moving because her son was actually a victim of gun violence, so she kind of talked about it firsthand, and I think like a lot of the students took it very seriously and were like inspired and moved by it.
Another thing we had was the senior class put on a talent show, and one of the seniors actually won, Noah, and he sang with Mr. Foy, and they together won, and it was a very good show altogether.
Another thing about grades, report cards are coming out this Friday, so parents keep an eye out for those.
The pride committee is selling candy grams for Valentine's Day, so they are a dollar, I believe, and you can send them to your friends or a significant other that you have at the school.
One thing that me and Olivia wanted to talk about is for our honors Spanish class, I think we're in Spanish five, right? We're doing this project where we're designing like co-living communities, and we use like the FabLab and the 3D printers, and we got to see them a few days ago, and we get to present them in front of our class, so we're really excited about that.
Another thing that's happening right now is sports are getting to the end of their winter season, and indoor track had leagues today, which from what I've heard, went very well. And our hockey senior night in the boys is coming up this week, and basketball and wrestling have also been doing very well, and they're wrapping up as well.
And then the last thing is just a heads up that parent-teacher conferences are coming up February 28th, I believe, at the high school, so yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments for the committee? All right, thank you very much for coming, appreciate it. Next item is the public forum. Anyone here to speak in the public forum? Okay, seeing one move along. I think if you don't mind, committee doesn't mind, I'm going to move the field trip up. I think several people are here for the field trip, is that right? So why don't we move that up, which is item seven E on our agenda.
Okay, hi. Jim Buck, I'm faculty at the high school in the social studies department. The field trip that we have in mind, I'm here to ask your approval for it. We're trying to organize a trip to bring students to several of the major cities of Central Europe next April 2020. I first heard about this when people from EF Tours reached out to Craig and wanted to know if any faculty would be interested in doing this. I volunteered to talk to him with some trepidation, but then when I heard about the trip, I said, I thought that it was just too good to pass up, and I wanted to make sure to follow up on it. The tour begins in Berlin, then spends a couple days there, goes on to Prague, and then on to Budapest, and then finally Krakow. And the thing that really jumped out at me about the tour is how much it fits into what we study in the social studies department in our history classes, starting with formation of the nation-states and the empires of old Europe, you know, these are old cities, and then onward to World War II and the Holocaust, and certainly the Cold War. So many of these things that we learn about in the classroom, it's an opportunity for the students to really see these things firsthand, see the Berlin Wall, see Checkpoint Charlie, see, you know, some of the concentration camps in Krakow. So, to me, I just thought that it's a really nice opportunity for the students. So, I've made some preliminary steps in reaching out, engaging interest. We're hoping to hold a parent meeting for prospective students next week to present the tour to them and see if we can get people to commit to going. Expected cost is, you know, I hate to even talk about money, I wish we could just offer it to everybody, but it would be about $3,200 per student. I just think, you know, beyond the obvious benefits of travel and experiencing other cultures, there's also the chance to supplement what we teach in class, both in 10th grade and US History II and in world history, in some cases to back up what they've already learned, and in other cases to prepare them and give them some real firsthand knowledge of things that they're about to learn. So I think there's real educational value to the trip. It's possible that in order to get the most favorable airfare, we might end up missing a day of school either before or at the tail end of the vacation. They asked me to, you know, build in that, you know, to at least be aware of that possibility. Thought I, so I thought just to be transparent, I should mention it to you as well. But, you know, other than that, I guess I would just ask if you have any questions.
Thank you, Jim. Questions, Lily?
Yeah.
I do have a question. You know, we're looking at equity and access to this, and $3,200 is obviously out of the reach of a great deal of students.
That's true.
Or do you have any plans to do fundraising to at least allow for some scholarship programs? Or students who are interested?
Absolutely, I mean, yeah, the fundraising, we definitely want to explore that, you know, and I know that it's a little bit of, just only a little bit of a, you know, knockdown from the price, but if we, if we can get students to commit soon, they said they would take off 10%. But I would, I would definitely, you know, take part in any fundraising opportunities that, you know, I think, I think we'll have a, based on who I've seen sign up and express interest, I think we'll have a good creative motivated group. So, I would definitely be active in pursuing that with them. I'd take part in any activities that they wanted to do to try to alleviate the costs a bit.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Yes, Amy.
So this is, is this going to be open up to the incoming new ninth graders for next year?
I've only spoken to, to the people at the high school now thus far. And, you know, I guess, I spoke to the people at EF Tours about their, you know, their policies, if they have any policy of limiting it. You know, other than the difficulties of communicating the availability of the trip to incoming ninth graders, I'd have no objection to it. The thing I like about keeping it within the high school, the thing in favor of that is I know everybody who's expressing interest. And, you know, I want to know that it's somebody that, I want to know, if I, I want to know the kids, and I know that I can count on them, and they know they can count on me, I hope to, yeah.
My question, I guess, because the new ninth graders will be in the school for at least September till April, so you'll get to know.
Sure, yeah.
I just didn't know if it was, if they were too young to go on.
Yeah. I don't know, I, I think it would be borderline, I'm not, but as far as I'm concerned, if parents wanted to, you know, to allow their students to go, I'd be happy to, to publicize the trip with the folks at the middle school and have them send interested people my way.
Otherwise, I think it's wonderful.
Uh-huh, I hope so, yeah. Yeah, I'm excited, well in advance.
Other questions comes? I see down, you note here that there needs to be, I think, 12 plus students, 12 students anyway, and two chaperones is kind of the minimum number?
Yeah, they say that their preferred number is, is like one adult chaperone for every six students. I've already had, you know, and I have no idea if it's based on any realistic chance of actually being able to go, but I've had 30 or 35 students ask to have me invite their parents to the, to the meeting, provided we're able to go ahead with it, yeah. But, and I've had, you know, two people definitely say they would chaperone, and a couple more sort of expressed interest. It's a nice tour, so.
I, just one other comment, and to some degree building on the point Lily said, that, you know, I think there is a finance issue here where $3,200 is a lot of money. It's a pretty good chunk fee, and I'm sure any student is going to try to fundraise to help defer the cost, but there will probably be some students who won't even look at this because there's no way they could even come close to meeting it. And, you know, we get requests for field trips periodically, some of which are quite expensive and some are less expensive. I don't know kind of what this would look like, I'm kind of thinking aloud here a little bit, but it would be interesting, it would be, I think it'd be interesting to think about whether the district, or it's really high school primarily, you know, can create some kind of fundraising capacity to create money that's available for international trips. We've had students go to China, I believe, in the past, right?
Yeah.
And we've had students go to different points in Latin America.
They're going to Spain within the next, during February vacation.
I don't remember how much that one cost.
Ballpark, same, same thing.
Yeah, it's very expensive, and so, you know, I, these kind of opportunities are great. I support them 100%, but I just think we have to think a little bit more about how do we make sure that students all just have an opportunity to do it.
Yeah, I mean, I always cringe a little bit when they, when they do ask about the money, you know, because I know that right away it rules some of them out, and that's unfortunate.
Something to think about, yes.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I'm excited about the trip to I think it'll be great. Just an idea for, in the future, is maybe partnering with the Community Foundation or the Ed Foundation. Maybe they could sponsor one or two full scholarships, so that you could.
They still could.
Oh, and they still could. So maybe reaching out to them to see if they would be interested in partnering. The Watertown Education Foundation or the Watertown Community Foundation?
Yeah, uh-huh.
The Community Foundation, we can get you in touch with the executive director there.
That would be fabulous, yeah.
They may be interested in partnering to sponsor a student or two.
Yeah, that would be nice.
That's a good idea. Okay, any other questions, comments? So is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the field trip for April 2020.
Second, any other discussion? Fall in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
So let's go back up on the agenda and to the teaching and learning showcase. So we have the overview of the high school programs and services, and I thank the principal and the other staff from the high school that have come. Just a word of context here, we included this here as part of the showcase, to kind of give an overview of the high school, because one of our action items is to approve the program of studies. So, this kind of provides the broader context to the program of studies, which is something we approve every year. Dr. Golson?
Excellent, thank you. I'm just going to hand it over to our high school presenters here. I think they have a lot to share with us, and I'm excited to be able to share with the community the excellent curriculum and programming that we have for all students here in Watertown.
So I think you may have met everybody that's up here that's going to present tonight, but if you have not, I just want to make sure that you know that I'm Shirley Landberg, the high school principal, Laura Vertondo, who is the CTE coordinator, and Adrian Eaton, who's the lead guidance counselor. So we really were excited when DeeDee asked us to do this, because I think that sometimes Watertown High School is like that hidden gem, so we get to expose some of its facets to you tonight. And we are excited about the things that we offer for our students. For a small high school, we have an amazing amount of variety and depth of offerings, so this gives us a chance to tell you a little bit about those tonight. So, we prepare students for life, and we do that through a focused curriculum. That curriculum is rigorous in every one of the disciplines, and there's a pathway in each one of them for students to go as deep as they are able to go, and we encourage our students to do that, and we have the supports in place to help them get there. We also build lifelong skills, health and wellness, team building, leadership. You hear a little bit more about some of those things as my two friends here present as we go through. Organizational skills, financial literacy, communication skills, problem solving, critical thinking, all skills that they need to go into their next phase of life, no matter what that is. These are all foundational skills that will help them to be successful, not just in high school, but going forward. Turn it over to.
As students are engaging in some of the curriculum that Shirley mentioned and that we'll get to a little bit further, we in the guidance department are working either through the delivery of our guidance curriculum, small group or individual meetings, advisory, and some other targeted events to help students think about their plan for the future. Our curriculum very broadly addresses the transition to high school, and then introduces students to career exploration through our Naviance College and Career Search Tool, and then moves forward in helping students with future planning around everything from taking the PSATs this year for all of our 10th and 11th graders, starting to think about admissions requirements or prerequisites for particular programs that they might be interested in. And some of that work is supported through our individual meetings, some of it's supported through our advisory curriculum. And in just a few weeks, in part of program of studies here tonight, you know, we'll be meeting with students individually to talk about course selection. And that's a time where we, in conjunction with the teachers, work with students to kind of think about what is the rest of my life at Watertown High School look like? What courses am I going to take? Are there certain prerequisites I need to get into maybe a higher level course? Or when I'm thinking about maybe a particular major or college, what do I need to be taking? And how do I get there? So we'll be meeting with students to do that as well. There is a pretty long list in your packet of some of the other kind of future planning, college and career planning activities that we in the guidance department do, where I'm not going to go into all of them, but it's that kind of salmon colored sheet, so that'll give you kind of an overview of the year and some of the, the kind of different opportunities that we have for students to help them as they think about their future and eventually leaving Watertown High School as graduates.
And as you know, any good 21st century curriculum includes technology integration throughout everything that we do, and you also know how much we've done because you've supported it through the budgeting. We integrate it into all of our classes. We have a wonderful FabLab where students can go to do extended projects and assignments, and that's used very regularly. Most teachers probably all use Google Classroom. We are now one-to-one with Chromebooks. Some of our teachers are experimenting with Flipped Classroom, and we have a number of opportunities for blended learning. Apps and technology to help students organize, plan, and study. There's several that we use rather regularly, Quizlet, Google Calendar, Kahoot, and Khan Academy. Is it still me? And we have a lot of opportunities for students. We have advanced placement courses. This year, we are running 15. We could run up to 17. Some are courses that they can choose at either the honors level or take that extra step to do the AP courses. And Virtual High School has a whole bunch of other virtual, advanced placement courses that they can take. If it's not one that we offer, they can't fit the one that we offer into their schedule because they're taking their triple math and double sciences and all of those things. We have Project Lead the Way, which is an engineering pathway that we've engaged in. It's a national curriculum, and Laura will talk more about that, so I won't talk about it right now. We have Virtual High School. Like I said, we're a member of the consortium. We contribute one teacher to the consortium, so she teaches a class that doesn't include Watertown High School students, because that's the online experiences with a different instructor, could be from anywhere in the country. Actually, could be from anywhere in the world. Generally, it's from anywhere in the country. And we, that's 200-plus courses that you can choose from there. Independent studies allow students to create and craft a personalized learning experience where they can dive deeper into a subject matter of their interest. They work with a teacher and create that coursework and outline and how it's going to be assessed. And that is a fairly regular thing in the upper classes. There are industry certifications, again, that's something that Laura will talk a little bit more about. We have summer internships. We've partnered the last few years with the Watertown Community Foundation on a summer internship program, and that has gone very well. One of the bigger ones that has a number of internships is Trees for Watertown. We have Teens for Trees working on that all summer long, and that's kind of an exciting program. I end up being part of that board just by virtue of partnering with them, and that's kind of fun. We have the meetings in my office. Lots of leadership programs, and we're expanding our repertoire in that area. And Adrian can talk a little bit more about them, but there's one through Rotary, there's Hobie, MIAA. We have started to engage in a lot of those leadership opportunities this year for students. We have a Harvard Peer Leaders Course 1 and 2 that we partner with Harvard University on, and Harvard graduate students teach that. We partner with Wayside on another peer leader program, and we have the Rotary Student Speaker Program. So those are the things that we do in those areas. In terms of, this is just our graduation requirements, which I know you know what they are, but our graduation requirements are 134 credits. They put them in a very good position to do whatever they need to do in life, whether it's going on to college or whatever. It's four years of English, four years of math, three years of social studies, that includes US history, three full-year science courses that are lab courses, all our science courses are lab courses. To round them out, fine and performing arts or career and tech ed, they need at least one full year's with the credits in those, any combination that they want. Many students take more than that. PhysEd, you'll hear more about when we get to the program of studies and what we're proposing for going forward. But they have to take one course every year that they're at WHS, and that's actually a law, but we also subscribe to that as a graduation requirement. They take one wellness course, and although we don't require, we do strongly recommend that they take three full years of a world language. And in addition to that, they have to pass all the MCAS exams in English, Math, and Science. So Laura?
So, some of the things that we do in the career and tech ed area is we are trying to offer more and more industry-type certifications, so things where students leave high school with some kind of skill that they can actually apply in the real world. We currently have a financial literacy certification in the finance classes and accounting classes. There's an online program that they, that students actually go through, and then they get the certification if they pass the assessment at the end of it. In culinary arts classes, they can get ServeSafe trained and certified. Engineering, they learn CAD and some other programs, but we don't have a certification in it necessarily, but there are college credits and scholarships available through the engineering program. Both graphic design and radio and TV broadcasting have a new program this year through CertiPort where they, students, if they choose to do it, can get certified in any of the Adobe Creative Suite products. And, excuse me, we had, it's very exciting, this year we actually had our first student become certified in Photoshop, so we're very excited about that. And CPR is offered also through PhysEd classes, but our Modern Family Life classes, the students can get certified in CPR as well. Sorry. The Project Lead the Way is our engineering curriculum. We are up to the four courses, including a capstone course at the end. And all of the Project Lead the Way courses are full-year courses. These are not half-year courses. There's two foundation courses, the first two, then there's a specialization course and the capstone course. And this year, Mr. Campbell, the other engineering teacher in the department, has actually created a new one semester course called Introduction to Robotics. And I'll talk a little bit about that again later. I hand, I handed out a brochure that's for Project Lead the Way at Watertown High School that you should have in front of you, the colorful one. The two ladies, young ladies on the front cover are alumni of our Project Lead the Way engineering program, and they are both studying engineering at WPI. This freshman year is their, this is their freshman year. I'm going to talk a little bit, the next slide is about the college credit that's available for Project Lead the Way courses. Students who take Project Lead the Way in high school can actually qualify for college credit. There are, they have to receive at least a B or higher in the course in high school, and they have to earn a score, it's a STANICE score, scales, but they have to earn a six or higher on the end of course assessment. There's two ways to do that. They can either apply for and pay for the credit through one of two fairly local universities, the University of New Haven in Connecticut and Rochester Institute of Technology in New York. And then you will actually get a transcript that has the credit on it, and your grade will be on that. And then the other way is there are many schools that offer credit for the courses once you become a student there. So WPI is one, Wentworth Institute of Technology is another of the two in Massachusetts. There's also lists of all the other schools throughout the country in your packet that also offer credit. So switch gears a little bit to Virtual High School. And I wear the hat of Virtual High School Coordinator at the high school as well. So, we have, there are over 200 courses available, that's also on a handout in your packet, including, as Shirley spoke about, the 23 AP courses. All the AP courses in Virtual High School are full year. They offer core courses, electives. We use their Flex program for some credit recovery. The Virtual High School allows students to take a course if they have a scheduling conflict, even if we offer it. It allows students to pursue a topic to greater depth than we, you know, may have a further course in. And it prepares students of the, you know, for future online learning, and I think it's fair to say that most students are going to experience an online course at some point in their future. So I think this is a kind of a good, safe, structured place for them to learn that with some support from us.
And while many of the courses, probably all of them, offer opportunities for our students to participate in mentorship and developing leadership skills, and there are some courses that really, we wanted to highlight that really promote mentorship and understanding of differences. These courses are geared towards helping students grow as leaders, mentors, develop advocacy still, skills, and understand and appreciate differences. What's great about these classes too is that it does spark some interest in students for further careers. So for example, our Reach Out PE class has had students go on to decide to major in education or special education based on their work mentoring students with disabilities in that program. Our Intro to Robotics and our Foundations of Art classes have provided some opportunities for students who are new to Watertown, new to the United States, learning English to explore some. to explore some of our electives at an earlier, kind of earlier in the process of enrolling at Watertown High School. And then we have a wide variety of clubs and activities. They're all on our website in the Student Resources section, but some of the ones highlighted here are ones that we thought really give our students that, that place to really discuss issues that are important to them, debate, promote awareness about some of the things that they're working on, whether it's mentorship. The GSA came and spoke at our faculty meeting a couple months ago and promoted, presented to us about what, what some of their concerns are and some of the things that they want teachers to know. So some of these clubs are really out there helping students grow as leaders and become more engaged in their, in their, in their community and in their school.
And that's a wrap.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate all of you coming and making that presentation. It's very helpful. Questions or comments from the school committee? Anybody? Kendra?
First of all, thank you for your time and your effort with this. We appreciate it. I had a couple of questions. One is with the Virtual High School. Just, do you have an average of how many courses are taken every year? And kind of, are they nine, what are the ages mainly that people often take the Virtual High School courses?
So we have fifty seats that we purchase every year, and that's roughly twenty-five each semester, but those flex seats come off of that fifty total also. So if we have students who are taking credit recovery, we reserve a few seats for them. I generally see mostly seniors, some juniors, and an occasional sophomore. I could get you statistics on that if you really want it.
No, I was just wondering.
Okay.
And are they usually all fifty seats taken?
We're either really close, or we have a waiting list typically. So yeah, it's pretty, pretty well attended.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Can I add something?
Yes, please.
I think one of the, the things that I have found to be very successful in Watertown, I've seen Virtual High School in other locations, and it isn't always as successful as it is here in Watertown. And that's because we have it during the block, and it's supported with an adult. So oftentimes, when students are in an online environment, they get a little lost. But we're very good about supporting and mentoring and keeping them moving and giving them the help that they need, which is, I think, why it is that we're full and that our kids are successful. So... Sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
So I kind of have the similar question, but in regards to the Project Lead the Way. What year would you need to be in order to start these courses?
So you can actually enter in any year, including freshman year. And there's an opportunity, so for instance, if somebody was, was really interested but didn't start until sophomore year, they could double up on the courses in a later year so that they could get all four, or they could get three. It doesn't matter. As long as you start with one of the foundation courses, you can start at any time.
So these are considered electives, then?
Yes.
In addition to your, because obviously it would support the math and sciences that they're learning.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yeah, yes, Kendra.
One more question. Looking at the requirements for Language Arts, I know that Common Core does require three years for Language Arts. Are we thinking about, and all of our other requirements match up? What's that? World Languages, sorry. Yeah, right, not Language Arts, World Languages. Are we thinking about making a requirement for the World Languages to get in line with Common Core?
So we are having that conversation. Every constraint you put in is a constraint in the schedule, so we have to be careful that we don't squeeze other things out by doing that. I, I think we're very, very good on the counseling end as to counseling students exactly what they need to take their next step in life with their plans. We don't have that in place, but it's, it's a conversation we're having.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Eileen? Do you want to add to that?
I just want to, once again, just emphasize the fact that Watertown with, just without the World Language requirements, that we're completely aligned with the Mass Corps, which is something that is optional. It's not something that districts have to do. It's something that Watertown did a while ago, which I think is just a commitment to making sure that our students, as Ms. Lundberg said, are prepared for whatever path they take after graduation, which could be career, it could be college, it could be a gap year, whatever it is, that having that Mass Corps as a requirement is really beneficial for all of our students in Watertown. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Eileen.
That's all right.
Thank you.
It's all right.
I really like this brochure. I've already suggested to Dr. Goldson that we should print up some more and put them in the library downstairs in the town hall foyer where they have different things, just anywhere where we think somebody might pick it up and discover that we do this engineering. The other thing is, I think because engineering is maybe a little more opaque to maybe some of these kids who are younger, that we could do a little explanation or proselytizing. Maybe you already do it in eighth grade, but when they are thinking about their courses, to explain to them actually what it is and what the sequence is so they're not arriving in the high school without having full knowledge of what are the kinds of things they could take.
And that actually is why I did the brochure a couple weeks ago for the eighth graders coming up, and then also when guidance is going to the eighth grade. That's part of our plan is to kind of show them what's available so that they know, you know, what it offers them, as well as, you know, gives them something to take home.
So do you find that the engineering classes in the high school now are full, generally tend to be fully subscribed, or are you still?
I think we have about forty students total, so no, we, we could certainly
Could use more.
Fit up to eighty in the pathway, the way that we have it staffed right now. And that's part of the reason for trying to get it to be more understood by the eighth graders and, not just eighth graders, because ninth graders, when they come in, they don't have as much flexibility in their schedule. But we'd also, we also need to publicize it to the high school, the students that are there currently so that they know there's an opportunity to start at any time into that path.
I think also if there's an opportunity to tell the middle school parents that this exists.
I'm going to send a letter to all the eighth-grade parents, include the brochure in it.
Think about this new possibility that they haven't considered.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
I would, just as, on that, and maybe Dr., Ms. Lundberg can speak to this, but when the eighth graders come over to the high school, I think there's kind of an introduction, and I would guess that this is part of it.
They all went through a Project Lead the Way class when they came up.
Yeah, yeah. My son's an eighth grader, and he's taking a class now that's kind of introducing engineering. So I think there has been some efforts at the eighth grade to try to get students to understand a little bit about what those options might be.
So we actually have five Project Lead the Way courses at the middle school.
Yeah.
They're enrichment courses, and so they kind of lead in and have the same project-based, you know, critical thinking thing. So a lot of the students didn't make the connection when they were in my classroom last week, you know, with their teachers. I had to ask them, "Have you taken a Project Lead the Way?", and they didn't know. When I said, "Have you taken green architecture or have you taken design and modeling?", then they went, "Oh, yeah, I took that." So the connection isn't there. I'm hoping to make that connection more visible.
Yeah, yeah. My son was probably one of those that didn't make the connection. Other, other comments? Yeah.
Now that we, I didn't see it on this list here, but now that we introduced and offered the PSATs at the fall of the tenth and eleventh grade, and we can get those scores available at an early time in the year, has there been thought of offering an SAT course at cost, obviously, for parents to be able to sign their students up for? Like a weekly SAT course through a company that would come in, or?
Well, actually, we do a homegrown version of that over the summer usually. We could talk about doing that during the school year. But we offer it during the summer at the same time as summer school is going on, and some of our teachers teach that.
A little bit cheaper than the companies that do it.
It's just hard sometimes to get kids focused in the summer.
Yeah, we could talk about doing it in the school year.
So can I add something?
Yes.
I just can't help myself.
Go ahead.
And maybe Ms. Eaton might be able to speak to this as well, but one of the best things about the PSATs is when you get the results as a parent, it also sets you up for Khan Academy, which has its own PSAT prep. So it's free, and, you know, it's a matter of making sure, and that's probably something that, I mean, they probably do, I don't know, but making sure parents know that that's, that's an option so that there is that free support for PSAT. And having that sophomore year just gives you a good sense of what to do before the junior year, so.
Just to add to that, we, when we helped students access their PSAT scores and kind of announced, "They're coming, they're, they're here", we had a couple students who used Khan Academy speak to the tenth and eleventh graders and kind of talk about how useful it was and how they could do it anywhere at any time and how their scores increased and how easy it was to access. So we've been pushing that a lot. We met with our juniors last week and kind of revisited, you know, PSAT scores. Free, 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 free Khan Academy. So the word is, is hopefully out there. We're definitely sharing it with our students. Yeah.
Other questions? Questions or comments for the presentation? Okay, thank you. Again, thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. That moves into the, our action items. The first one is the Curriculum Subcommittee. And the action item component of that is the High School Program of Studies. But before we get to that specific action, just ask Lindsay to do a kind of a general overview of the Curriculum Subcommittee. We don't have minutes for it yet, so we won't approve it at this point, but when we get the minutes, we'll approve those at the next meeting.
Sure. So at our meeting on, when? Wednesday last week, right? I think it was Wednesday. It was Wednesday last week. Yep, we, we met and we discussed three major items. One was recommended changes to the Program of Studies, which the committee approved with some language changes for a few comments in the meeting unanimously. We also looked at a detailed class size report from grade six through twelve and kind of had a good discussion about classes that are big and how that problem really fluctuates year to year and is rather unpredictable, the handful of classes that are oversized at the high school or the middle school, and that really varies, you know, year to year. And, you know, in part of opening up access to, to courses, especially higher-level courses, some students sometimes means that the staffing needed to support that is unpredictable. And so in an effort to give a lot of kids access, that has happened in sort of unpredictable places over the years. We also had a really preliminary conversation about leveling and tracking at the secondary level and really kind of just got to a point where there's a lot of things happening in the middle school and the high school that are leading in a really positive pedagogy kind of direction for the district. And that conversations around leveling and tracking are sort of always on the mind of administrators and teachers and how that's affecting equity and access for students. And so, you know, we really understand there's a lot of further conversations that need to happen around those practices. So I think that's better.
Okay, thank you very much. Why don't we turn to the, the Program of Studies then? I don't know, Lindsay, if you have any particular comments on it, or do you want to turn it over to the administration to do that?
No, I mean, I think that the administration can talk about it. Thanks.
I'll invite Principal Lundberg to come back to the podium to just highlight the changes.
So in our packets, we have a couple of pages that I think highlight the proposed changes.
Right, they do. And I'll just kind of, you've had them, but I'll quickly go over them. A lot of the changes that were made in the Program of Studies were to open up access to higher-level courses for students. So they, they did that in physics, opening it up. Honors physics used to be only for grade nine, but they thought that there was an opportunity for tenth, eleventh, and twelfth graders to take advantage of that, too, who might want a deeper physics experience once their math catches up to that deeper level. Intro to Medical Science, that description was just slightly updated in order to include the opportunity for additional collaboration opportunities with medical professionals. Up until now, the, the major part of it was the biweekly trips to either Mount Auburn Hospital or the Sim Lab, but they're going to bring medical professionals into the classroom as well. That class has moved out of the Health Department and into the Science Department this year, so that was prompted some of those changes. AP Physics, we have two offerings currently, one algebra-based, which is AP Physics I, and one calculus-based, which is AP Physics C. We offer currently for AP Physics C, Mechanics, and Electricity, which is actually two AP courses, two tests at the end, and they choose between them. They have felt that there is a desire by some students to maybe focus on one of them for the whole year, and the mechanics test, I think, is the one that was taken more frequently. So they want to offer that as an option for students, that they might want to just really focus on the, the depth of an AP Physics Mechanics course, and they'll see if it fills. And if it doesn't fill, then they didn't predict that perfectly. But in addition, they want to replace an astronomy elective that we've had in the past with an earth science elective that has an astronomy unit to it, but it's not one-hundred percent astronomy. I think that that will be a bigger draw for a number of students. So we won't run the astronomy next year. We would run the earth science and see how that goes. Some years, the astronomy is not run, so it's a good time to, to change that up. Honors Biology, they updated the curriculum to include some emphasis, additional emphasis on biotechnology techniques such as micropipetting and gel electrophoresis, which is really definitely, we're in the hub of biotech here, so that's a very good upgrade to that biology curriculum. Guidance is not particularly changed, that section. It spells out practice that we currently do that wasn't spelled out in there, such as fully scheduling ninth and tenth graders and at least six courses for eleventh and twelfth graders. It also explicitly states that state universities require Algebra II for admission. We didn't have that in there. We thought that was important to have in there. And also makes a statement, which is interesting, because sometimes if someone can't get into a class because of a conflict, people generalize that and say, "Oh, well, if you take this, you can never take that", and that's actually not true. We are very creative. You saw Adrian here before. That guidance department works really hard at getting everybody what they need. So we wanted to make a statement that said, "If you don't get what you need, ask", because we might be able to fix it, but ask early, because that's the point at which we have the most opportunity to fix that for students. So don't think because someone had a conflict that worked, that, that didn't work for them at some point in time, that everyone has that same conflict. It's not true. We do a great job of trying to really personalize kids' schedules, so we wanted them to ask, so we put that right at the head of that part. World Language, a minor thing that we've actually kind of encouraged but didn't write in there before was if you want to switch your language from Italian or Spanish or Arabic or Armenian to a different one, and you want to do that before Level Two, just have a conversation with the World Language Coordinator first to make sure that you are meeting the needs that you want to meet in the long run. I think sometimes they think that schools want a whole bunch of different ones. Sometimes they want the depth of one. So they just want that conversation to take place before that change is made. Design Thinking in the FabLab. We now have a digital learning coach who's integrating in all of the coursework now and all the curriculum. So we can't dedicate her to this anymore. I didn't want you to think Design Thinking's gone away. It is a component of all of the Project Lead the Way classes. It's a component of all the physics classes as well. Student Help Desk. Now that technology's completely integrated in the classroom, it used to be that students would go out and they would help with those. That's not so necessary because there's students in every classroom that can help with all of the technology needs in the classroom. That was also a fairly low enrollment thing, and again, a role of the previous person, Innovation Specialist, who's now the Digital Learning Coach, and is in all the classrooms. We have really good response from all of the technology professionals. If there is a problem, they're on it right away. So we think we can fill that need without running a course for it. And then they just put a kind of overall description of what digital literacy curriculum is, and it's taught throughout all of the courses. And if somewhere here, I have a handout on where it's taught. If you are interested in that, I can give you that after. English Language Arts. You might remember a few years ago, I came to tell you about how we were trying to give seniors some choice as to how they met their English requirement in the senior year. The senior thesis paper still was part of it, so everybody that took that course would take the first half of the year that would be research in the real world, and they would do their senior thesis paper then. And then they had a choice of what their second semester elective part would be to make that a full-year English. Well, try as we might, that didn't schedule very well, and really only one or two of those were sufficiently populated in order to make it happen. And a lot of kids chose something and then didn't get it because we couldn't populate it. So instead of that, this year, what the English coordinator thought she would try to do is she took the most popular elements of those others, blended it into that second half year, and made it just a full-year course. Full-year courses are easier to schedule than two halves that you have to put together. So that's what we're going to try this year. We started with Foundations of Drama this current year, and that is a course that is pretty exciting. I can hear it on the stage from my office, and they're doing a great job in there. They just want to add another level. It won't take another teacher. So if you've taken Foundations of Drama, your next course would be Advanced Acting. They're half-year courses, so it's still the same FTE that's doing that. Math has revamped all of the math pathways, so the students are on a path that would take them through Algebra II. Did have a handful of students that were not on that pathway this year, and we had to rectify that mid-year. But now we've written our pathways so that they, they take you there. Some will take Algebra II over two Some will take Algebra II over two years. Those are students that might never have gotten to Algebra II before. So we are pushing that a little bit farther forward. We also stopped calling anything an applied course and went for this is Algebra I, this is Algebra II, and not tried to categorize it with some other adjective there. Special education courses, that, that whole section of the program of studies was rewritten. It had not been in a couple of years. Course names no longer would identify the course as a special education course as they never should have. So now they don't. And course numbers at some point were changed when we adopted Power School, but that didn't get drawn into the program of studies. We fixed all that. Used to list adaptive health as a related service. That was never a related service. We have applied health as a course. School-based counseling is a related service, was never on the list of related services. We brought that in. And then special ed and math had a great conversation, making sure that all of those courses are aligned to the general education course pathways as well. Social studies, the major change there is allowing for greater access to the upper level courses. Instead of saying that this is the only way you can get in, it's more like this is how you would automatically be eligible, but here's how you can pursue that if you're interested in challenging yourself at another level. So they've written in language for that. ESL, it's a kind of a minor change. That, they do such a fabulous job of looking at who the population is, where they came from, what their needs are, where their holes are. So we generally have a little bit of a change every year there to meet the needs of the population in front of us. What they had at one point was an intro to US history, but we are back to a US I and US II pathway that everybody's in now. So they're, they've written the course of studies that way. CTE is not a big change there. The Department of Education frequently fusses with names of either courses or programs. Last year, they fussed with all of the names of courses and we updated our program to match that. This year, they fussed with all the names of the programs and we updated our program of studies to match that. That helps us to align correctly when we go for Perkins funding, which is important to us. And added the descriptor in all the project lead the way courses, that they are eligible for college credits. So that's bolded in the program of studies. PE and health, I think, I'll just tell you what we did and then maybe turn it over to Joe to tell you where it landed. So there are times in a small school with a lot of offerings, that there's some conflicts in schedules. And the PE requirement is a law. So there were a lot of things altogether, kind of in conflict with each other over that. The law says everybody takes PE every year. There was a demand by the school committee, by parents, for some kind of flexibility there that was not innately built into that. So Joe and I chaired a committee, Joe ran it really, to examine options on that. So I'll let him tell you about it because he did the lion's share of that work.
So the document you have in front of you, and I'm sorry you didn't get it prior, but what it articulates is the current graduation requirement as it is now, which simply states students have to take four physical education classes, take a physical education class every year in front of one of our phys ed staff as a semester-long course. And then we also have a freshman health graduation requirement. So you cannot graduate high school from Watertown High School without taking the health course, which is generally taken when you're freshmen. So the proposed changes on the other side, and it includes three required courses that students would have to take. That's a personal fitness and wellness course. That course will be in place, that'll, so we're going to remove freshman phys ed and create a personal fitness and wellness course, which will focus on fitness. Project adventure, which is no change. We currently offer project adventure. It'll just now be a required course. And health and wellness, which is, will be the new iteration of what was previously our health course at the freshman level. The major changes are that these three courses are not going to be, they're going to be offered and they're going to be required, but they're not going to be required in a particular order. So students won't have to take health and wellness as freshmen. We may schedule them that way. That may happen generally speaking, but it'll create more flexibility around when they can take these classes. In addition to these three required courses, students have to take one of the three options below as a fourth requirement. And so they have reach out phys ed, individual and lifetime activities, and net wall and team sports. So the last two there, individual and lifetime activities, net wall and team sports, are essentially what we are teaching now. We're calling it 10, 11, or 10 through 12 phys ed. And we've basically broken, we've already broken that course into two sections, a A year and a B year, because we've offered so much, we couldn't put it all into one semester. So essentially, now we're going to kind of re-shuffle it a bit so that it's more topical. So you'll have your net wall and team sports, individual and lifetime activities. Students can choose one of those three. And then that'll include, if we ever offering additional courses at the high school, they'll be added to that option that they have, that students can choose from. Any questions so far? I just want to, it's, it's a bit of a complicated because we have the, the high, we wanted to create a program that had fidelity and obviously recognize the importance of wellness, but we also have to comply with a state law that requires phys ed every year. So, so far, everyone's with me?
So the physical and the freshman health that are right now, in grade nine, are those half semesters, half a year each? Is that how it works?
Everything is a semester-long course. And it's, it's still going to be a semester-long course. So in addition to that, and I stated the law here in this document, just so everyone understands, you know, the parameters that we have here. Phys ed has to be taught as a required subject in all grades for all students in public schools for the purpose of promoting the physical well-being of each student. That's a direct quote from the Mass General Law. Lots of districts are applying great flexibility to that law. And the DESE, there's a lot of documentation from the DESE that they're okay with that. So we wanted to provide some flexibility for our students. So in order to comply with Massachusetts law, students at Watertown High School will be required to enroll in a wellness course every year. In the case of an unresolvable schedule conflict, so they have a full schedule, they're taking a language, MCAS prep, or, you know, whatever their, their restrictions are in their schedule, a student may propose an alternate way of meeting the wellness requirement. An alternate proposal will require the approval of the coordinator of health, phys ed, and wellness, and the high school principal. And then I listed some possible alternatives there. So this was, we had a discussion about this at the subcommittee and, you know, based on their feedback, I modified this a bit. This doesn't be, one of the confusing points of this can be that the alternative is not in place of any of the required courses. The required courses must be met. The alternative is if hypothetically, students could double up on one of these courses. So if you took two of these required courses in your sophomore year, that would hypothetically leave you with all the requirements met, say your junior or senior year, and, you know, you have a full schedule now because you want to take an AP class or one of the engineering classes that we offer, you could exercise this bottom option in that situation. I hope I'm being articulate with this. It is kind of complex. It's not as, it's not as simple as I would have liked. And there was a lot of moving parts.
Let me, let me ask you, yeah. So this is going to be part of the, this, I know we were quite ready for this one, but is, is, this is part of the program of studies. So this is what we're being asked to approve tonight as well, along with the rest of it. So did the, did the curriculum subcommittee look at this?
Yeah, we did. And we actually, you know, worked with, you know, Joe and Shirley and had some recommendations about that list, what it looked like. And we kind of arrived at a place that it was, this was wrapped into our approval of the recommended changes to the program of studies. You know, we also had a great conversation about this opens up access to a lot of students to take courses that didn't have space for before. You know, we discussed how counseling would make sure that they identify this possibility for students who may not be the squeaky wheel, who might know about this option. And so we covered a lot of important conversations about this proposal.
That was a big part of it, is sometimes these options on one-off situations have been exercised. Like we've been trying to provide flexibility on case-by-case basis for students. But because we're not articulating it clearly, it's not, there's equity issues. So we wanted to create a more transparent process and articulate those, that flexibility in the program of studies.
Okay. I just, I think we can proceed here. I guess, I'm just, there's kind of a lot here. And usually we would have this in advance, so we could kind of mull it over and think about it a little bit. But let me, let me see if I understand correctly. So you have the three required courses. Let me ask you a second. The state requires that you take a course every year? Or you were talking about doubling up in one year? So if you took two courses in your sophomore year, you don't have to take one in your junior year? Is that what you meant by doubling up?
That's what the new proposal would allow.
Will, will the state allow that?
If we, if we exercise this, this option at the bottom of the page. So lots of districts offer like, and essentially an excusable from the phys ed requirement, if you're a varsity athlete.
Right.
Or if you're, you know, if you do an independent study. And I've done a lot of research in other districts and, and they were exercising these options. Worcester is one of them. Belmont has been doing this for a while. Bill Ricker, I think, exercises some of these options too. So the state has allowed, and if you look at some of the FAQs, for instance, from the Mass Corps, it articulates that the school committee, I'm trying to come up with the exact wording of that, of that FAQ, but it's, the school committee has the sort of authority, yeah, thank you, to, to create some flexibility and to determine what the phys ed requirement will actually be. And it doesn't necessarily have to be, according to this document, a course that's taken for, you know, a quarter or a semester in front of a licensed teacher. It could be an athletic.
So, so what you're proposing is that the, the three that are required at the top, everybody takes those. And so the fourth course to meet, to meet the requirement could be one of those three that you've labeled there, or this kind of broad array of options.
No.
There's no war.
Yeah. So there'll still be four requirements. The three are kind of set in stone, if you will.
At the top.
And then the fourth one is a choice of the three or anything else that we would offer in the future would be, you know, added to that list.
That's what I thought I said.
John, the flexibility comes for when you take the courses. So the state law is requiring that students are in phys ed every year, but this provides a flexibility that a student could conceivably take two of these required phys ed courses through Watertown Public Schools in one year, leaving maybe their junior or senior year an extra block available to take an additional AP class or take a second language.
That was my initial question to you. So, so it's not that you have to take a course every year. You need to basically have four semesters over the course of your time as a, as a student.
According to the law.
Right.
Yeah. But as it stands now, our current policy, and which is in our current program of studies, is that students have to take a course every year.
Right.
And that was put in, I, I, actually, my historical reference may be off because I think it predates me by about a year. So prior to me being here, which is my fifth year, we didn't have a senior phys ed course. And we didn't have a senior phys ed requirement. That was new. And I remember because I taught senior phys ed my first year here and I got a lot of complaints from seniors because a lot of them anticipated they wouldn't have to take a phys ed course their senior year. So this was sort of trying to create a balance.
But so, so I'm sorry, let me go back then. So I, I guess I'm not clear why you have a list at the bottom there. If, if what you're saying here is that you have these three required courses at the top, you have to do those, and to satisfy, and each of those is a semester. So you only need one more semester to satisfy the, the four semesters. And you're saying, in addition to the above, students must select one of the following courses. So if you pick one of those three in that group, there's your four.
And you've satisfied.
You've satisfied it.
You've satisfied the requirement.
You've satisfied the requirement. So why would the athletic option and the rest of these even come into play?
Because if you took two required courses in a year, so that's, we'll run through a hypothetical, if you were a freshman and you took personal fitness and wellness and health and wellness.
Yep.
And then your sophomore year comes around, you take project adventure. So now you're a sophomore, you've eliminated all three of these requirements on the top box. You're a junior and you take one of these courses, say, reach out phys ed.
Yep.
Now you're a senior.
Yep.
You need to be scheduled for a wellness course.
According to the law.
According to the law. We're going to then allow the option, I'm sorry.
All right. Okay.
Yeah. It was really, like, that's why I tried to do it graphically, because it's hard to, to.
Okay.
The last quarter there.
Right. You have to have one phys ed course every year of high school.
In your state.
It's not total number. So you can't double up freshman and sophomore year and not take any.
All right. Well, that's what I asked. And I thought you said you could. If you took two your sophomore year.
No, you're confusing the graduation requirement with the law. This is where the flexibility part comes in.
And that's why it's particularly complicated, because we have a graduation requirement and the law that we have to comply with. So the bottom, so I guess if you look at it this way, it might make it more clear. The bottom part is in order to comply with the law. The top part is what we think would be a good requirement for, to emphasize and to put a strong, you know, emphasis on, on wellness in Watertown. So the top part being like, if the law didn't exist, all we would have is the top part. And then kids could double up, they could finish this hypothetically in two years. They could take two classes their freshman year, two classes their sophomore year. Problem is, what complicates things is now we have a law that requires a course every year.
Okay.
So in order to meet that, without asking kids to take a semester-long course, because currently, the current system is, freshman year is not a big problem because they, we have five required classes that they ultimately take. They take a fit, four phys eds and one health class. This new proposal would go to four required classes total. So freshman year is not usually a problem because kids take health and freshman phys ed during the same block. So they'll take period one health, and then the next semester, they'll take period one phys ed. Not, not usually an issue. Sophomore year comes along and say they take project adventure for one semester. Now they're required to take one every year, but that second semester, we don't offer a tremendous amount of semester-long courses that they could take. So they often get a study that second semester.
I'm sorry.
Well, yes, it's a bad example, but it, kids often have a study on the flip side of their phys ed schedule. So whatever semester they're not taking phys ed, they often have a study. Unless they've chosen an elective, but there's not a huge amount of electives to choose from, so sometimes they just opt to take a study. And so this is in order, in order to create, because a lot of kids have come to me and said, you know, I wish I could have doubled up my junior year. I could have taken an AP course my senior year that I now can't get into because I have to take that semester-long phys ed course senior year. This is giving them that option. Now you can double up, but in order to comply with the law, we're going to ask you to do something along the lines of this bottom part.
So you could do, my last question, sir. The list at the bottom, the bullet points, you could do probably at most two of those?
Yeah. I mean, ideally, kids are taking a wellness course every year. Because this is, this is only going to be exercised in the case where a kid, I'm sorry, a student has a full schedule. So this won't, we won't be exercising the option of opting out of a, of one of the wellness courses if you're just taking a study, you know, first period or something.
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you for your work on this. I know I've been asking about this. I, it makes sense. Is, well, you have discussions with students coming in because you may, a student may not know that I'm going to need to have, I'm going to need to take an AP class junior year and it's, that's a more challenging time to get scheduled. So are there going to be discussions about, you know, if you're on this kind of pathway, you may want to think about doubling up freshman sophomore year? So I just, I'm not sure how much kids would know unless they had those conversations with you about it.
So my plan is to ensure that guidance, like, that's why I wanted to create, I thought this would be as friendly as possible because it was just, it's hard to grasp. There's two competing things and several moving parts going at once. But my intention is if, should this be approved, that I would go to the guidance department, you know, sometime around now or, you know, early spring, and make sure they're clear on this so that they can properly counsel the kids to, to make these decisions. And the guidance councils are kind of hungry for this. They, they're the ones who have often come to me and said, you know, this kid really wants to take this course, but they can't because of the phys ed requirement. And, you know, is there any flexibility we can provide? And in the past, a lot of times, the answer is no, because of the way our policy is currently written.
Thank you for your, for your work on this.
Questions on this? Comments? Anybody? Anybody? Yes, Eileen.
So maybe by slightly changing the wording, it would make it more clear to people.
Perhaps, yeah.
That there are two separate things going on here. One is our graduation requirements, and one is the Massachusetts state law about having to be physically active every single year. The required courses, can they be taken in any order?
Yes.
So that should be stated, that they, can they be, can you take the same required course again or not?
I mean, ideally, no, but if that's, if that's the only option to.
So that should be stated, too. And then when you get down to the Massachusetts law, maybe it should, as I said to you at the curriculum subcommittee meeting, first you should underline or bold, in the case of an unresolvable schedule conflict, so it's very clear that this is not something for everybody. It's for people who cannot fit these classes in. And then a student may propose an alternate way of meeting the yearly wellness requirement. And I think part of the problem is because wellness is used in two different contexts here. So one is the required courses, and then the other is this idea that you should be active every year. So if there could be, I don't know if there's another word or another way of putting it, but so people understand, it's two separate graphs or two separate lists. And I think that might help because, so there are requirements to graduate, and there are requirements of the law to be active. And that's, a requirement to be active is where this bottom bullet list comes in.
Right.
And that was the intent of putting it in a separate box and citing the law, but I think you're right.
Right, but I think it's, I still think it's almost like two different side-by-side lists or tracks.
That's not, I definitely endorse what Eileen is saying because that was my confusion. I mean, you have proposed high school wellness requirement at the top. I would take that to mean the entire page. And so you really need to separate those out.
Right.
You need to separate the wellness requirement out from the annual state requirement, correct? That's what you've got going here.
Yeah.
So you could satisfy the wellness requirement if you did, you spread out these four courses, one each year, then you're done. And this doesn't apply to you, the bullet points, because you've done it, you've spread it out over the four years. So you just need to draw that distinction. I think Eileen is right, that they really need to be more separated.
I would add the word state even, alternate way of meeting the yearly state wellness requirement.
Right, right.
So that there, it's clear that it's not the same as our graduation requirements.
Right.
The state calls it a physical education requirement.
Let's call it that.
That could be what I could distinguish it with, you know. My intent was to create a wellness requirement so that we are more encompassing, and I like the idea of moving into more of a holistic wellness approach. So that was, that was the intent, but I think.
Good intent, but I think it's confusing.
So I think, yeah, actually putting that phys ed piece in there would maybe make that clearer.
I mean, you could have wellness title over the whole thing, but then I think you've got these two separate boxes, if you will, in terms of the requirements, and then you've got the annual state requirement. Right. Anyway, I'm sorry about that.
No, you don't have to apologize. I want it to be crystal clear. I don't want anyone to be confused by it so that the feedback is good.
And Joe, I'm wondering if it would be helpful to have two scenarios, sort of on a document that guidance counselors could help distribute and explain to students and parents?
Yeah, I was going to do that.
This is very clear. I'm a freshman, I take those, and I want to take AP, blah, blah, you know?
Yeah, Adrian and I actually already created a bunch of hypotheticals, so we were going to create some and then, so that, so that the, I think the hypothetical makes it clear. And then, you know, I don't know if we would want to include that in the program of studies now, but just adds like supplemental information for parents and students, just here are the hypothetical tracks that you can take to fulfill these two requirements.
If it helps to illustrate, I mean, if you want to do that.
Sure. The one other thing we did discuss was how you can, how the student provides validation that they are doing whatever this alternate thing is. So we mentioned either having, if, let's say you're doing dance outside of school, that you have a, something that has to be signed by your dance instructor that shows you are doing it, that sort of thing.
So the, it's always create some sort of documentation?
Yeah.
Would you think that would be?
Whatever works for you, but I think you have to have that.
You've got a lot of flexibility in this, these bullets, so you're going to have to have a way to document that.
Yeah, I was always, that was always the intent, is to create the documentation. But I can explicitly cite that they'll have to be documented in this program of studies.
Other questions, comments?
I just want to make a quick comment, is that I agree that the documentation is important and kind of indicating that students will have to do that. I think in terms of hypotheticals and things like that, I don't think really belongs in the program of studies, mostly because it's a, it's a policy and then implementation is what happens outside of the program of studies policy. And I really, I feel like the confusing part of these two parts is just two headers, that's it, you know?
Yeah.
Page goes sideways instead with the header of graduation requirements and a law requirement, that's all. I mean, I think it's a great opportunity for students at the school to meet all the requirements that are.
And that's fine, so maybe guidance counselors would have the examples that they could draw from in the advising they do.
And we can make sure they're accessible.
Yeah, that's a good point. Other comments, questions?
I just have, I don't have a question on that anymore. I get that. I understand that.
Okay, good. Good. All right, good.
Can we go back to the other one?
Okay, sure.
Question about that?
Yep. This was, I think, the last piece, right, for, of the list? Okay, yeah, go ahead.
I get that, I like that, I like that a lot. All right, so this is where you're going to have to go back to help me explain one thing here. Am I on the wrong page? Oh, yeah, I was on the right page, okay. So, all right, one quick question. The English senior year course, what will you call, what will that be labeled? Do you just haven't come up with a name, or is that just?
It is, I think I put it in here, didn't I? What it was called? Yep, English 12, Literature and Film.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay, no. And then under the math, so, okay, so I'm always going to go back to math.
Okay.
So when the students come in that aren't able to take geometry as freshmen, they get Algebra I?
Yep.
Okay, so then this says they have to take Algebra II over two years, so will that have to be there?
No, they don't have to take it over two years, they can take it over one.
Oh, okay, I thought, right here.
Not that many people would take it over two years.
Would take Algebra II over two years.
Yes.
Okay. Oh, that's like, okay. So it can be done in a year, then?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I was just thinking that's two more years that they'd have to take.
That's more typical.
Is that just a, is that just a way to create flexibility if they need to take it over two years?
That's a way to spend more time on foundational skills with students that are struggling.
That struggle, okay. So if they complete that in one year, then they get two years of a math of their choice of the program that they're going into.
And they can always, there are some maths that don't have to be following some other one, they can always double those.
Do they back, so it would be freshman sophomore year, do they take a year off in between and take, what do they take, how do they do that? So Algebra I freshman year, Algebra II sophomore year, or do they wait until junior year for Algebra II?
I will flip to the chart for you.
It's geometry in between.
It's Algebra I, geometry, Algebra II?
That's what I thought it was, yeah. Pre-calc or, you know, whatever direction you end up going in at that point.
Right.
At that point in time.
Yep, or statistics, or, right.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
I think to the point, though, you know, one of the things we want to make sure is that every student has the opportunity to attend a four-year college if that's what they choose. And for most schools, you know, Algebra II is the course that is expected. So we want to make sure all of our kids are, have that ability to get through that, whether it's through one year or two years. The point is that.
If they have decided they want to go to a four-year school, we don't want to be the school that closes doors, we want to be the one that opens them.
Exactly. I was reading it sideways, so I was reading it, I only, I caught the end of it off, I didn't, oh. So I was only seeing that it was over two years, okay.
Thank you. Yep, you're welcome.
Other questions? Eileen?
I just have a comment. I'm actually very appreciative of the philosophy that I see operating here behind these changes, which is opening up more choices, more flexibility, more customization, and also creating fewer situations where you've gotten into one particular path and suddenly you realize you want to be on a different one, and there's no way to get into this different one, and now you're kind of making that easier. I really appreciate that.
That was definitely a goal.
Good point. Yep, anything else? Other questions, comments? So is there a motion to approve the program of studies?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Guys have it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
That's the beginning of a very complicated course selection process.
Onward.
Thank you.
Now we can go there.
Next item on the agenda is the item B, which is school choice. So this is a kind of annual event that we go through each year under state law. It's a kind of automatically, you're in school choice unless you opt out of school choice. So every year at about this time, if we choose to not participate in school choice, we have to take a vote to do that. And I think the recommendation here, as you can see from the material we have, is that the school committee, the recommendation is the school committee resolves not to participate in school choice for reasons of space, class size, and financial equity. Dr. Galston, you want to add to that?
No, that meant it's pretty much it, that we need to make that choice as to whether we want to have tuitioned in students.
So that there are motion to not participate in school choice?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it. Thank you very much. Next item is the amended EDCO Articles of Agreement. And we approved these not too long ago at a previous meeting, but then there were some changes made, and we need to approve those. So Dr. Galston, if you want to speak to that.
Excellent. So the school committee voted on the amended Articles of Agreement back in the fall, and all the member districts of EDCO did the same thing. And the Articles of Agreement were presented to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for final approval from the commissioner. They were returned with a few minor changes and edits. They're not substantive, but they do require a vote of the school committee to approve the amended Articles of Agreement. One of the, I think the only major change, other than small date changes, is changing a voting member from DESI being part of the governance to just having a liaison from DESI. That was the only thing that I would consider to be substantive, but it's not impactful on EDCO operations.
Is there a motion to approve the amended EDCO?
So moved.
Second. Any other discussion, questions? Yes, Eileen?
And I guess I'll ask DeeDee, because she's the one who goes to these meetings. Did they consider adding the words individuals or organizations with whom it does business to the end of number four? They added various categories of discrimination that they, they do not participate in, and then they said their policy of nondiscrimination will extend to students, applicants, staff, the general public, and individuals with whom it does business. And I just wonder if there was any discussion of making it individuals or organizations with whom it does business.
Not that I recall.
Okay, I'm not going to hold things up because of that, but for the, for next time, it might be good for them to at least think about it.
I will take that feedback, too.
Okay.
May Dean.
Other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the disposition of surplus property. And so we have an email here or a correspondence from Heidi Perkins, Director of Finance and Operations. So there are a couple of items here listed that are, have been deemed to be surplus by the district. I have to admit, I think in the past, we haven't necessarily taken this action as a school committee. I think technically we're supposed to do that. And so we have some items listed here. We, by approving them as surplus, then the administration will, you know, make them available within the district and even at other schools, perhaps. Heidi, if you want to speak to that?
Yeah, we would determine, you know, on our best estimate if there's any value, and then what the demand may be in the marketplace or whatever it may be. If the items can be sold, after we, you know, put it out to the rest of the school departments and other town departments, we can donate them to other governments without having to go through basically 30B, because 30B does determine not only in purchasing, but also in disposition of assets. So the vote is really authorizing us to, you know, turn over things that we no longer need. And then, again, depending on what the item was and if we feel there's any value, we may see if somebody wants to take it from another school district or whatever, and I've done this before. If there's something that we ever have, like, say, when the schools are done, if we have items, desks, and things like that, that another district may want, the same thing would come up. And if it's something that we determine we could sell, that money does go back to the town into essentially, it'll fall out into the free cash, it'll go in as a miscellaneous receipt. It does not stay with the school unless the items were originally purchased out of a school gift fund or other non-operating, and then that money could go back in there. So we, you'll probably be seeing more of this as we, you know, get this to be a regular practice. But these particular items, and I'll just say, I mean, it says what it is, but for the public who may be watching that doesn't have it in front of them, there are eight lunch tables, we have already purchased the new ones to replace them, these do not lock, it's causing a safety hazard, they're just, you know, falling right back down on the floor. Two old pianos that, from what we've been told from the middle school, are at least 40 years old and have much more damage than it would be even worth looking into repairing. And one very small metal desk, it's really almost like a, almost like a side table in a way, but it's heavily rusted. So we will put it out to the other departments and for the desk, may even put up the lunch tables for other school districts if they want to make the repairs. But we, I can't imagine that any other town department would want them, but I am going to check with the town hall and see if they have a mechanism for sharing this out to the other departments when we have surplus that others may be interested in.
Okay, thank you. So is there a motion to, to approve the action to make these surplus?
So moved.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it, thank you. Next would be, we did the field trip already, approval of gifts. So we have a list of gifts. I'll read off a couple of these, and I want to highlight, come back to the community foundation for just a moment. I think it's Luter's Environmental, $75. New Genza, $119.67. Vinciolo Charitable Foundation and Trust, $7,000 for a Martha Fitzpatrick Scholarship Fund. I'm going to skip down for a moment. James and Debbie Heller, $250 for robotics. $100 from Mary Geary for robotics, $50 from Magna and Wendy Nagrin for robotics. And then also we have listed here some community foundation grants. $1,000 for college visits, $553.21 for motivating materials for purposeful play, $1,152 for the Discovery Museum Traveling Science Program, and then $5,000 through the grant award system that the Watertown Ed Foundation, which is now part of the community foundation, has made available. I just, actually, let's approve those first. So is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the gifts.
A second.
Any discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it. I just want to note and thank the community foundation for the, all the financial support that they give to the district. They, some of it is listed here. There'll be more coming at a later point when some of the awards are, come to fruition. But there was an announcement, you may have seen, that there were 20 education grants from the community, community foundation totaling a little over $29,000. And every school in the district, all five schools, had some benefits from that, and even some outside, like Friends of Watertown Music also received some money. So we thank them very much for their support. Let's see, approval of minutes. We have the minutes from, first page here. Minutes from our January meeting, January 7th. Their motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Any changes, issues, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it. Thanks. Next would be the condition, so that ends the action items. Reports. The first is from the superintendent, the condition of school buildings. And I just, by way of preface, there have been questions raised in, you know, in the community to the school committee and to others about some of the conditions in school buildings. And we've actually done quite a bit of work in this area in the last couple of years. And so I asked the superintendent to, to give us kind of an update on that, of where that's at. And she's done that, working with the, first, the director for public buildings. So, Dr. Galston?
Thank you very much. And I would just like to acknowledge the fact that Lori Cable is here as well, the Director of Public Buildings, which you just alluded to. She's here if you have any specific questions around the maintenance and upkeep of our buildings. But yes, in response to some of the concerns that we've heard in the community around our buildings, I just put together a memo for the school committee highlighting not only the actions that we took over the last year and a half, but just in general, our proactive actions, as well as our responsive actions that the Department of Public Buildings engages in on a daily basis to ensure the safety of our buildings. So one of the things I think we always preface this with is, you know, we live in a, in a district that has old buildings. Our oldest building, built in 1925, being the Lowell Elementary School, and our, you know, baby of the batch is the Hosmer Elementary School, which the addition was completed in 1967. So, we, all five of our buildings were built in the time where, you know, asbestos was used as a product, whether it was for pipe insulation, plaster, you know, binding of plaster, or floor tiles, or whatever it might be. That was the heyday of the use of materials that contained asbestos. And therefore, just like almost, I'm not going to characterize as every public building, but most public buildings built in that timeframe, along with many private buildings as well, certainly have ACBMs or asbestos-containing materials. So, in 1986, the EPA moved forward and said that we want to make sure that we are cautious and doing the right thing by our buildings that have asbestos-containing materials, since we know that most of our buildings do. And so the Asbestos Hazard Emergency Response Act was passed. And what that said was that school buildings needed to be inspected, and we needed to have a baseline report that indicated where in our buildings we had asbestos. And that baseline report would then inform future inspections to make sure that any ACBMs were appropriately tended to and taken care of over the course of, you know, moving forward. In 2016, we had a series of inspections done, and at that point in time, it was deemed that those inspections were not thorough enough. So in the fall of 2017, which is when I began as the superintendent, and actually when Lori Cable began as the Director of Public Buildings, we said, "Well, we're going to start again, and we're going to do baseline detection throughout all of our buildings, and destructive sampling," which is something well above and beyond what's required by law. So we went ahead and did that, and we found that in a few of our buildings, the Cuniff, the middle school, the Phillips Administration Building, and the high school had areas that needed to be remediated, and that would either be through encapsulation or abatement. So those were the measures that we carried forth. In those reports, we were given timeframes as to when we had to do that. We followed the timeframes appropriately. In that, throughout that process as well, our custodial staff was trained about asbestos hazard removal and awareness. We reinforced what should be done if there's any type of disturbance to any of the asbestos containing materials. We took care of the issues that we had across the buildings. But certainly, if you remember, we had sent letters home to families. We held a school committee meeting regarding the high school specifically, in terms of making sure that some of the plaster that was damaged was repaired, and that we knew exactly moving forward, if there were more disturbances, what we would do. So, that took place throughout the course of the winter of last year. We continue to monitor every six months in terms of asbestos-containing materials. And even now, if people have concerns, and they raise those concerns, we will have the area tested, or have the area visually inspected. Right now, we are, you know, fully confident that we know where our asbestos is, and we know how to manage it across the board. That being said, I think there were some other concerns that were brought up around, whether it be environmental hazards like mold, or other things that would happen within buildings. One of the things that we know that we went through in the fall was some of the sampling from the Department of Public Works in terms of our fixtures for lead, indicated that we had a fixture in our Hosmer kitchen that had lead in it, and we informed the community, and we moved forward in the repair of that fixture. Tested all of our potable water across the entire building, found that that was really the only location that we had any issues, and we went ahead and remediated as much as possible. And currently, Lori is looking at, or is moving forward with a schedule to test all of our buildings on a more regular basis, which is not required, but it is something that we think that we will, will do. We had baseline, again, sampling in 2016, so we have the information about lead in the water, and so we will continue to do random sampling to make sure that nothing pops up, such as what happened at the Hosmer. But beyond that, you know, if, if a staff member requests or is concerned, they will call the Department of Public Buildings or us, and we'll refer them to the Department of Public Buildings. Then we'll do air quality sampling, which we've done a couple of times this year. For us, at this point in time, nothing has come back with an issue, but certainly, we are very respectful of the fact that just because there isn't something hazardous in a room, if there's an odor, if there's a smell, we will do whatever we can to remediate, whether it be through air filtration systems, or, you know, painting, or doing whatever it is that will help the situation. We are on top of that and doing that moving forward. So just to, in here, there's a lot of information about what Lori and her staff are doing. But just to finish up with the AHIRA issue, or the AHIRA Act. So every six months, we do that visual inspection, and then every three years. So we're on year two now, so at the end of next year, we'll contract again to have an outside agency come in and inspect. We are on track to have that done every three years moving forward. We had the Department of Labor Standards come out and review our AHIRA protocols and our inspection reports, and the Department of Labor Standards has said that we are fully in compliance. They did a visual inspection as well. So, at this point in time, my point in this report is to let you know that I believe fully and completely, and have full faith and confidence in the Department of Public Buildings, to ensure that we are not only in compliance, but being very proactive. While we are continuing our residence in these aging buildings into the future, we are so blessed and fortunate in Watertown to be involved in the elementary school building project, which will help to remediate any issues that we have in our elementary prod, in our elementary buildings, as well as our high school, which will be the next large, major building project. And we are very well aware of the middle school, and as you heard from our capital improvement plan, you know, that will be a focus for us, knowing that that's, will be our oldest building soon. So, I'm here to answer any questions, and certainly Lori is here as well, if you have individual questions for us.
Questions? Any questions, or?
I have a comment.
Yes. Or comments?
So, first of all, I just, I have to extend a huge thank you to Lori, and to Dr. Galston. I feel as though this administration has been incredibly transparent in everything that they have done, especially regarding the asbestos concerns. Any concerns that have been actually brought up to the attention of either school committee or the administration have been addressed to the very extent that they could be, obviously understanding that some things are going to happen through time, and they have a very clear plan in place for any concerns that are raised. What I would like to ask the public is that they talk, and that they come forward and they express their concerns in a productive manner that allows us to address those concerns as quickly and as expeditiously as possible, because I believe that they will. In fact, I am 100% sure that they will. I have read through everything, and I am not only confident that the administration and every member of our staff that is in those buildings is doing everything possible to keep our kids safe, and that they would never allow our students to be in a building that they were not 100% sure was safe for them to be in. So I want to commend the administration, as well as Lori and her entire staff, for the incredible hard work that they do every day, to make sure that our buildings are in as good condition as humanly possible, and to be proactive in taking any steps that they consider necessary to ensure the safety for all people who are in those buildings, students, staff, and otherwise.
Thank you.
Can I just add something just on that? That we are going to have a joint meeting, but a tour of the high school building. So as you mentioned, if anybody has any concerns, certainly at 4:00 on February 11th, we'll meet in the foyer of the high school, and just walk around and kind of point out areas that we've remediated or abated, and answer any questions that either the school committee or the town council might have, as well as anybody in the community as well, so.
Yes, Mark.
Thank you to everyone for their comments. I did raise this issue at the council meeting two weeks ago, because there is a petition that also is addressed to myself and the town council. But what I do want to say at this point, I'm very comfortable that we're doing everything we can, just like Lily said. I'm a little bit concerned that comments get out on Facebook, and they're misconstrued, and they get blown up, and I think that people that are paying attention to Facebook for all their information should take a step back and pay more attention to what's written by Charlie and his site, what's said here, what's said at the council meeting. I think because we're, we're giving you what we know as people that are elected officials here, and there's nobody here hiding anything. So I think, you know, I, I really sometimes look at some of these comments, in particular with this issue, that are so completely false, that, you know, people are taking that as what's happening, and that's not true. I want people to be assured that what was, has been said here, and continues to be said, is that we have, that we're doing everything we can do. They are old buildings. We'll address them when necessary, when it becomes an issue. But I'm appreciative of all the efforts, and I feel that the children of this community are safe in our buildings. And our teachers are safe.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Lily. Any other questions? I think, both of you are speaking, I think, on behalf of the school committee in those sentiments. I think you're right. Absolutely. Any other questions or comments? Dr. Galston, final comment? You mentioned the February 11th.
Yes.
Okay.
February 11th, in the foyer.
And so, you know, we can send that out and publicize that.
Absolutely. And it's a good chance for people to get in and see the high school, especially as we move forward in our high school building project. It's just a good chance to walk around.
Okay.
Reminisce.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much. Building for the Future, Elementary Schools Project. Mark, do you want to speak to that?
Thank you. At the last meeting of the school building committee, the committee voted unanimously to move forward with the schematic design of a new Cuniff Elementary School, a new Hosmer Elementary School, and a renovated and expanded Lowell School. I think this is, and I'll say it as I said that evening, this is exciting news for our district. This is a huge, huge benefit for the community and our students, where we have an opportunity to have two brand-new buildings that will be state-of-the-art in every possible fashion, and give the students a great learning environment. I will say that the manager, the town manager and I had a brief meeting on this subject, and he submitted a capital improvement program to the town council for consideration last Thursday, which included the total cost of the $170 million. Those subcommittee meetings began this evening. The schools are going to be in next Monday evening, and I'm sure this is going to come up. But there is, you know, a path forward here, and so I'm really excited. And our next meeting, which is, the meetings are announced here, we're going to start talking about other technical aspects of projects. So I think we got over the first hurdle.
Agreed.
Okay. And, Mark, is the, the council will vote on that amount as part of the CIP?
Yes. The council will vote on the amount as the whole package, part of the whole package.
And when, when will that happen? Do you have a date for that yet?
I'm not quite sure. Probably sometime next month.
Okay. Yes?
I just wanted to make just one quick comment. In addition to the extremely exciting funding options for the elementary school building projects, a bit of a focus on the last building committee meeting, from my perspective, was really that the, about the changes that will happen to Lowell, because it won't just be, I really feel like describing it as a new kind of, a new Hosmer, and a like-new Lowell is really important, because we've got lots of information about what that project's going to look like, what it's going to offer for the students, and it, we've got a really good understanding at that building committee meeting, that it's a beautiful historical shell with a brand-new school inside. And that was just a really nice kind of information we got at that meeting, and I want to make sure people understand that maybe haven't followed those meetings. But look at the documents from that meeting, and the information we got about that project as well. It was exciting.
All right. Thank you. Yes, Kendra?
I just wanted to thank Mark, and John, and Lindsay. This is a lot of time, and a lot of work, and a lot of negotiations, and I really appreciate, Mark, your leadership on it, and everyone else's participation on it. This is so exciting for the district. I think it's, between this and the high school project, I think this is going to transform the district in a lot of ways, in the community, and I just want to appreciate your efforts. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? The other piece to the Building for the Future is the high school project?
So, at this point in time, we have drafted our request for services for the owner's project manager. It has been to the MSBA for approval. They have one last little edit that we are moving on right now. We'll be moving that forward at the school building committee on Wednesday night for approval for advertising, which means that that will, if all goes well, be advertised on February the 13th. So, that's our next major step for the high school building project.
Great. Thank you. Questions on the high school component? Okay. If I could interject here, we neglected to put in the Buildings and Ground Subcommittee, which met just before this meeting, and we don't have a formal report, but I was going to ask Lily if she can just do a quick update on what was, what the topic was.
So we had a Buildings and Ground Subcommittee meeting today at 5:00 PM, and basically, it was the first of what will be two meetings regarding the facilities rental agreements and policy that we have shifted. So we made one larger shift last year, which was a much greater shift than we had anticipated, and so obviously caused, I think, some concerns in the community. So Heidi Perkins and my, and our community have worked very hard to kind of address some of those concerns. And today at the meeting, what we just talked about was how that policy had played out, and also kind of giving us some really good history about what's happened regarding the fee structures, and what's been paid and not been paid in the past, and helping us to kind of understand how things have happened, getting us to this point, which really allowed us to kind of look at the policy that we created, and start thinking about how to adapt it in a way that reflects what the intention was, to make sure that we are really prioritizing Watertown students and our, and our children. So Ms. Perkins has come up with a kind of a different concept, which we are going to be starting to work through over the next few weeks, and we're going to have a follow-up secondary meeting with the Budget and Finance Subcommittee to look at the fee structures, because one of the things we kind of determined was, it was kind of hard to figure out how this policy would play out until we can see some numbers behind it. So right now, that's kind of our next step in the, in the facilities rental issue, will be a joint meeting, which we are currently working on setting the date and time for.
Great. Thank you. Questions? Any questions? Thank you very much. Also note here, usually every meeting, we have a report on the current budget. We don't have one this time, because the budget office is in the midst of putting together, pretty intense work around the FY '20 budget. And so I said we can, we'll skip it this time, and rest assured, we're doing fine. It's not that the money's all gone. We're doing fine, and we'll hear about it at our next time, next meeting. We have an update on enrollment. Dr. Galston?
Yep. So enrollment, we have, we don't have anything that's majorly concerning at this point in time. We've had, you know, the churn is relatively stable. One student less at the Cuniff, two less at the Hosmer, two more at the Lowell, two at the middle school, and two at the high school, in terms of ins and outs. So right now, again, as we, if we continue in this path, we shouldn't have any concerns till the end of the year. Certainly, I think that enrollment has an impact on our budget, and we'll certainly be, we will be discussing that at our February 12th Budget and Finance Subcommittee meeting, because we do have some potential impact for next year, based on some of the numbers that we have in our primary grades.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay. Other reports, we have the monthly report on warrants. It's in your, in your packet. There's a list of 15 or 20, look like more, like 20 warrants, you know, again, payroll, athletics, et cetera. We also have a list of personnel actions. I don't know if there's any questions on the personnel? Nope. Seen none. Let them go to, to my report, the school committee chair report. So I just wanted to put one point out, put a, a couple of ideas out there for, for comment, if you, if you so choose to tonight, as part of my report. And I sent a memo to people in advance. And the kind of context for this is that having conversations with the superintendent over, periodically over the last number of months, we've talked about different ways that the school committee can be engaged with the community, but also give different, which is one issue. And then the other is kind of different ways that the school committee members can be kind of more, kind of observing, if you will, kind of school practices, teaching practices that goes on. Things that we talk about, like responsive classroom, and a variety of other things, and kind of opportunities that we may want to see that. So, so I sent out this memo to you, just as a kind of a thought piece, in two different areas that I highlighted here. One would be what I've called kind of school-community forums, where school committee members, along with the superintendent, principal, along with the superintendent, principal, perhaps other educators, we would meet at individual schools in a kind of open-form environment, inviting parents, students, the general public to come. So, we might meet at the Hosmer, or then, or we might meet another time at the Cuniff, at one of the schools. And likely, there would be a short, you know, presentation perhaps by the principal about something that's going on particularly in that school at that point in time. But the really, the notion would be that it's an opportunity for informal discussion. There would be no school committee votes or formal actions taken. And in talking with Dr. Galston, she noted that Newton does this, actually, she's been doing it for a number of years, and they're pretty aggressive about it. They have, what, 22 buildings? They have 22 buildings. They do one of these every year in each of the 22 buildings. So, that's an impressive, a lot, quite a bit of meeting time there. And then she was familiar also where they did this in Belrika. So, that's one kind of community forum. We've done, over the years, I can think a number of years ago where we had budget hearings at schools. I know we did that once before, but this is something to think about. And then the other idea that I put out there was, which we, anyone could do now, is anyone on the school committee who would like to visit one of the schools, I mean, you can do that now, talk to the superintendent. And I guess in a way, I'm just kind of encouraging us to think about those options, to contact the superintendent, and, you know, superintendent can work with the principal and have a discussion with you, and maybe there might be two people. I don't know, we'd want to go too much beyond two, it gets kind of disruptive in a classroom if you have too many kind of observers, but we certainly can't go to four, because then it becomes a school committee meeting. So, it would have to be three or less. But I think I'm just putting that out there, and I think the superintendent is going to be kind of with this, when she meets with the principals, kind of thinking about, are there opportunities that come up like this? And then let us know about it. And then we would need to respond and say, yes, I'm interested. Can you, can we talk about a time that might work? So, it could come from her, from the central office, or it could come from one of us, who say, you know, I'm very interested in learning, I want to see this i-ready work or responsive classroom or something like that, and go to the superintendent and then kind of negotiate it that way. So, I just put those out there for, any comments, thoughts? Yes, Lilly?
So, first of all, I love both of these ideas, and they're things that we have talked about, I think, for the past year. I actually, what I would love to see happen is something that I think you actually thought of a while ago, which was the idea of having point people for each school. This kind of brings that up to me, of the idea of having school committee members kind of match with a school, which would allow for them to develop a relationship with the parents and the community in that school. And we're talking about these forums, but I love that idea also, because it gives an in for each school to have somebody on the committee that they feel like knows their school really well. And while some of us might be at the same schools, et cetera, et cetera, I think it's very possible to do some bigger, you know, digging into some of the other school buildings. And I would love to see that added, you know, not in place of the forums, but rather perhaps having people specialize would also mean that those school committee members would be present at those forums, and they would have a relationship with those parents in that community and know those teachers in a different way. And I would love to see that happen. And in the same vein, to some extent, as we're doing curriculum visits, maybe that's something that we discuss about different areas that we're all interested in, so that, you know, maybe co-teaching is my passion and something that I'm very interested in, maybe there's one other person on the committee that that's their interest, and then we can report back. So, that rather than all of us doing disjointed things and then having similar experiences, but not really having a purpose in the same way, it'd be really interesting if people, I would personally find it compelling to have people select what specific things they're interested in, and then using that to guide some of this in a different way. I just think a targeted approach, and also that we're not just going to Didi and be like, show me a whole bunch of classes. But having a more targeted approach to this, and also, that allows us to become experts in ways that we can support each other in this work, I think, in a different way.
Good points, good points. No, particularly on your second one, that's part of how I envision that, in the sense that, you know, if there's a couple of people that are interested in seeing co-teaching, then you want to work with Didi, and, you know, she'll kind of help facilitate that. But, good points, yep.
I was just going to say that the idea of a school or community forum, I really like, because I think that this environment is really hard for people to attend, because it's sort of infrequent, but also, it can be really intimidating for a lot of parents or students to actually have a conversation or bring up things they're concerned about. And just as many venues as possible to have more open conversations about the work that we're doing and the work that the schools are doing, and what parents are concerned about is helpful as a person on this committee. So, I think it's a great idea, and would be nice to get that going as soon as possible.
Okay. Other questions, Mark?
In particular, on the first piece of this, people would tend more apt to come out to a local school at night than a formal school committee meeting or a formal subcommittee meeting, which aren't really as formal as some people may think. And I think you'd be able to have a better conversation. We're always looking for ways to have better conversations with our constituents, which are parents, in this case, and taxpayers. And I think those types of forums with a small number of, even if the whole school committee's there, it's a very informal event. It's a Q and A, it's like they call it a town hall-style meeting, whatever you want to call it. I think it's, it would be very helpful.
Right.
And I often, I will take up your suggestion about going to the schools, because sometimes we see some of these initiatives, and I don't want to be a bother on a teacher or a principal, and, you know, we're paying for these initiatives, and we want to see what the people in front of us are talking about, in real action, in real time. So, I think all of this is a bonus for us and a bonus to the community to find better ways to engage people in what's going on here. Thank you.
Okay.
I have one little comment.
Sure.
The other day, I sat, Joe Lammman had invited a school committee member to join the wellness committee. So, this kind of reminds me of what we did the other night at that. They're reviewing the policy, which I happened to be sitting in over the summer when we reviewed all the policies. So, it was helpful for the parents there and for the members of that team to kind of get the input that I had to share, and then hear their input. It was, we kind of crossed paths, and it kind of, I think Joe said this is why he's always wanted a school committee member on the board, so it was, it's helpful, yeah. And it was good.
Okay. The one comment I would make, and I noted in the language I put here, the description on the school-community forums, that both Newton and Belrika, when they do it, they actually don't post it as a meeting, because they don't have, but then they have the problem where if a majority come, that's an issue. And what I would propose is that we actually post it as a meeting, but with the clear understanding that there is no action going to be taken as a school committee, and that if you can't make it, you can't make it. But you're not going to miss any votes on anything, you know. Because I would rather than say, well, you three can go to this one, and the other three school committee members can go to that one.
Just have open conversation.
Yeah, yeah. At any rate, any other thoughts? Okay, we'll work on trying to move forward with, kind of helping facilitate this. Next would be the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Not that I'm going to volunteer the first classroom to visit, but I think that it might be nice to go see some of the Project Lead the Way courses, just considering what we heard this evening. And I wanted to speak a little bit about the fact that, just hearing the depth of offerings that we have within our high school, I always think about the continuum of the, we just had our pre-K lottery, so we have our incoming students coming into pre-K, and then you think about, you know, 13, 14 years later, they're exiting as little engineers, when it comes down to it. So, I'm just always impressed at the depth of offerings. And tonight, I think we heard a lot about how it is that our programs really are connected to real life, how it is that our students are able to apply what they're learning in authentic ways and situations, and certainly gaining some skills that go beyond the traditional English, math, science, and social studies, and world language. So, I was just very pleased to be able to share that with the community. Sometimes I think that we feel that it's, you know, either the high school or a vocational technical high school, but I think that you'll see here that there's offerings for our students here within the Watertown High School, as well as maybe if they make other choices for technical high schools. On that vein, I think I shared with the committee back in the fall, when we were talking about, you know, becoming members potentially of a vocational technical high school, that we would be exploring some options in terms of the opportunities that are out there for students. And I just wanted to share with the community that we did take a trip to Medford Vocational Technical High School, just to get a sense of what they might be able to offer our students. That's in a comprehensive school setting, which is, you know, both academic and vocational technical high schools. So, that was just the first of our adventure in terms of finding out what exactly is available for our students. As we all know, that there, every student has the ability to go to a vocational technical high school, if that's what they wish to do, but we're just trying to find out all the opportunities that are available for our students. But that falls on the heels, again, of hearing what it is that we offer within our school. And I think that oftentimes, I want to make sure that people know that, or are aware of the fact that they should explore all the options that are here, and then think about what other options they might have. So, I'm just really pleased by the presentation that we had this evening from the high school. Just one little minor thing, I just wanted to make sure that people know that the state of Massachusetts has passed a minimum wage law, and we want to make sure that people know that we intend to make sure all of our staff are also paid at the minimum wage for Massachusetts. That's not necessarily a requirement for municipal governments, but certainly it's the right thing to do, and that is something that we will be doing as well. My next coffee is on February 25th. That'll be in the Phillips Administration Building at 9:00 AM, and again, at 7:00 PM. Very pleased, my last coffee was well-attended, very exciting. I think the word is out there, if you want to have some questions answered or have some exciting dialogue, to come to the coffee. So, I encourage people to do so. And I think that that's, other than the February 12th Subcommittee meeting for Budget and Finance, where we'll talk about FY '20, those are the exciting evenings that are coming up for the school department.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, new business? Any new business? Just a few, thank you, a few announcements, which I think upcoming dates, we've already mentioned most of these. I don't know that we've mentioned the policy Subcommittee, though.
Yes.
That's February 6th, so that's coming up on Wednesday at 3:00. To continue looking at the policy manual, correct, Eileen?
Yes.
With enthusiasm.
Well, it's the best time of the year.
So, that will happen on 3:00, and if you, you're in a meeting mode, you can stay around for the school building committee, you have to go to a different building, but the school building committee meets on Wednesday also, as Mark said earlier, and that's at 6:00. Budget and Finance, the superintendent just mentioned, will meet on February 12th. School Vacation Week follows shortly thereafter the following week. Superintendent's Coffee on the 25th, along with the Anti-Bias Coalition. And then our next regularly scheduled school committee meeting is March 4th.
Charlie, we have the walk-through? Oh, yeah, that's right, on February 11th. Yep.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. You have to re-add it in today. That's right, February 11th. Public Forum? Nope. No, Charlie? Okay. Motion to adjourn?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, guys have it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurie, for joining us this evening. You just never know.